Okay. Thank you. Good evening, I'm calling to order the May 8, 2024, meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. We have, we do have remote attendance tonight. People have the option to attend in person or online. We have one item on the agenda tonight. Technically, it's two. The 120 Turnpike 40B proposal. So, I think we can go right to you.
Yes, thank you, happy to provide an update. Again, I'm Brian Charville with the Ferris Development Group. Here representing the applicant, FD 120 Turnpike LLC. As we've shared with your staff and you, Mr. Chair, there have been three things in front of the ZBA. Of course, the application for comprehensive permit at this property, 120 Turnpike Road, a request to modify the 2005 special permit to allow shared driveway access, and finally, and more recently filed was an application to modify the 2019 special permit of this board relating to a parking garage that has not been built and will be built like we talked about two weeks ago. So, in the time since we were last together, we did appear before the planning board on a request to modify their 2019 permits, and as a result of the very informed feedback that we took from the planning board members, staff, and also members of the audience and interested constituents, the applicant decided to withdraw that modification with the planning board, which the planning board allowed. So, in light of that, the applicant requested of this board to withdraw the request to modify your 2019 permit. We submitted that yesterday, and that was filed by Ms. Davis with the Town clerk. So, with that withdrawal having been submitted, what remains before this board is the application for comprehensive permit and the application to modify the 2005 special permit. We've been talking extensively with Ms. Davis in the last couple of weeks about the status of this board obtaining quotes for peer review. And I understand, I think it was yesterday or today was the deadline for the last proposals to come in, and so we're optimistic about those being satisfactory to the board and the peer review portion of the comprehensive permit.
One second.
Speaker, is there any way we can address this, like a fan in the background? Yeah, it's very hard to hear. Thank you very much.
White noise is always a problem.
Yeah. He checked it before, I thought it was on, yeah? It was on, correct? His microphone?
Yeah, it was on.
How's this?
That was, oh, everything was much better.
You gotta be very close, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
And the white noise makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
So, I was saying, the update on the peer review, which Ms. Davis can speak to better than I, is that the proposals were due in the last day or so, and we're optimistic about that portion of the 40B review going ahead.
Okay. And, sorry, to be clear, your request to the board tonight is you want to withdraw without prejudice the special permit that was going to modify, correct?
Correct, our request to modify 2019, yes.
Right, okay.
Which would be consistent with the withdrawal that happened in front of the planning board.
Right, understood.
And how things were left there substantively was, the applicant is going back to the drawing board to look at alternatives that could allow both a 40B application to proceed and the land donation still to be made.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, who do you see that process going through, the modification that you're speaking of? Is that something to continue with the planning board, or?
Well, I think that it likely will take this board and the planning board and conservation, just as the parking garage took in 2019.
Okay.
And I say that because what the applicant's considering is whether the 40B could somehow be located on the non-land donation portion of the lot.
Okay.
Which mean, you know, there's already the two existing office buildings, and parking, and a septic system that serves those buildings. And so, depending on how it ends up being laid out, it may take relief from this board, relief from parking requirements, modifications to septic system, we're not sure yet, but we're trying to see if it all could fit.
Okay. That kind of leaves me in an interesting spot. So, we do have peer review. Just to follow up, we actually did receive, I think it was four total proposals? Five.
Right.
Five. Not all of them cover the same thing, of course, but as you would understand, but that's on what was submitted already.
Yes.
But you're saying, the applicant would like to review the overall site and say, well, is there a way to do this, have the 40B and the land donation at the same time? So, that to me sounds like the plans would, by necessity, change.
We're looking at that, but we really need the 40B to advance in this board's consideration of what's been filed to advance.
Okay.
So, we're gonna try to make both work, but if we can't, and I mean, we've told Attorney Tullerman our position on this, that we disagree that the land donation is still required, fundamentally.
Understood.
And so, we know, we're trying to approach it in a way that where we can do both, but our fallback is that we're, we'd like the 40B as drawn to be, continue to be reviewed by this board.
So, you want it to continue the way it is, but you will, at the same time and parallel, pursue this alternative approach that you're talking about?
Yes. But it's gonna take, but you know, we're together on the clock in terms of the statute and the review period of the 40B in action. And so, we don't want to continue to eat up that time while we, take a pause while we work on concepts. You know, we have a drawing that's been in front of the board since December that we feel good about and feel like should be allowed.
Okay. All right. Do you have an opinion on that, Jay, or is that really more of this?
Before I get to that, what have we done? We have, you have extended the clock at least once, maybe twice?
Twice.
Okay, good, so.
We did that in conjunction with, while our engineer went back to the drawing board and responded to that initial December feedback.
Sure.
To make some plan changes.
Okay.
And so, I think the clock is now August 31.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, and David and I talked about this a little bit offline. It's a peculiar, and I don't want to spend our time debating the issue here. Obviously, my position hasn't changed on the, on the fact that that condition is binding. I don't think we should take the board's time necessarily debating it unless they want to see us do that. So, the options for the board kind of exist along a spectrum, ranging from, we have a problem right now that hasn't been fixed, so we're not gonna move forward, that's option one. On the other end of the spectrum, it would be, let's just move forward, not our problem, their problem, let's move forward and just treat this like any other, any other 40B. And then, they're gonna be left to figure this out on their, on their own. Somewhere in the middle, there's all kinds of other little options that will keep you on a short leash, let's go through this peer review, try and keep making progress on this, to something like, well, Grant, assuming it got to an approval and the engineers and everyone liked the project and the board liked it, could be something like, here's your permit conditioned on you resolving this with the planning board. So, any one of those options is workable. Nothing says that you have to, even though this is a significant roadblock, I think, and you know, I give Brian and his team credit for trying to work with the planning board on this. Obviously, you know, there's a heavy lift, and I'm glad to see that they haven't abandoned those efforts and they're still working on it. Obviously, I saw a letter from the select board, still supportive of the project, obviously. So, it could, you could go anyway. You're not waiving the issue. If you decided to move forward, get the peer review done, obviously, it's an expense that they're willing to bear, that may not bear fruit, depending upon where we end up, but you could keep it on that kind of, on that track for the time being. So, it's really however you wanted to proceed. You're not losing any rights by moving forward, you're not losing any rights or objectives. I mean, I could strategize this to death as to what's best if this became an unmovable object, but it's not worth it. It's to try and wrap your head around a likely path of litigation which would likely spawn two or three different forms is probably not worth our trouble here.
Okay.
So, I think that the core decision for the board, and I'm happy to go over my opinion if you want, is that if you want to keep going, they obviously want you to keep going. They know there's an issue here. They know it's an issue that while they might disagree, that they're trying to resolve. They're not asking you to waive the issue.
Right, okay.
They'd like you to, probably.
Yes, probably, yes.
There's no, no one's making a demand. I've been in those situations where there's been a demand made, and that doesn't appear to be the case. So, it seems to me like you still have a willing partner to work with in terms of straightforward permitting stuff while we hold this other issue in abeyance, if that's where you wanted to go, but you do have the right to say, I'm uncomfortable moving forward as well, given the cloud that's kind of hanging over this a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I think it's, I would like to just get the pulse of the board on this, as far as which way we go. Mike, start with you.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's pretty straightforward. This is the, this is, this is the petitioner's project. It came before us. Hey, we're switching this on a relationship to the planning board, we wanna, we're not, we're getting rid of the other plan, we're gonna be using this plan going forward for the 40B. To me, it's, I'm not gonna get into the issues now as to the land donation, but at the same time, it's a situation where I don't think that's before us. To me, it's...
So, where would you, where would you tend to lean here, to continue as they're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's their petition, I don't have an objection to that.
Okay.
To me, there's this question with respect to that property and the garage, it's a totally separate matter, but to me, I don't have any objections to this.
Okay. Jamie?
So, I 100% agree that I don't think we should be making decisions on the 6.2 acres. I did listen to the planning board meeting from home. I don't think that's our role. Regarding moving forward, I won't say, I don't have any hesitancy with that, and my thought is, it's a lot of wasted time, our time, their time, and the people who take their time out of their evenings to come to these meetings, if we're talking about a proposal that essentially might get changed in a month or two. So, that is a real consideration for me, honestly. Can I ask you guys how long you would think it would take to potentially look at your plans and come up with a new proposal, if you were able to?
I think we'd have a concept this month. And I was gonna say, though, timing wise, we'll come back as soon as the board's ready for us to, and I know a new date has to be set tonight, but I would think, you know, there's an approach to peer review where it's like, engage somebody this week, pay them next week, and push them, and they could, I imagine, be ready to speak to you by the end of this month. Or, we could not rush them, and if there's a set meeting date already for this board in June, maybe then there's in due course peer review coming in, and there's been ample time for the concept planning to occur. And so, nothing's rushed.
I'm not sure I quite followed that.
We can say tonight, it's May 8th, we want to pick, this board would naturally be meeting, say, the last Wednesday of the month.
Right.
So, we want to set that as a continued date. We could do that, but I think that would be rushing the peer review, initial review, potentially, and it may be rushing the concept planning and getting feedback.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying, to me, it makes more sense to do the planning in three weeks or whatever it's gonna take you, and then start the peer review, once, if you're able to change your plans, like, why would we not, why would we start the peer review when there may be a change of stream in a couple of weeks?
Because it's gonna, it's not just getting the plan, it's then getting on the planning board docket, which they're fairly doctrinaire about in our experience. So, it's not gonna be like, we have a drawing the last week of May and we're in front of them the same week, or the week after.
No, I understand that. All right, my preference would be to not start peer review until we say, we're going with the original plan, nothing's changed, or we have an updated plan. That would be my preference personally, in terms of time-savingness and just what makes sense to me. I will say, I also did look at the maps again, and I was looking at the size of the garage that was originally proposed, and I give you guys credit for trying to make it work, because it seems to me like potentially it could work to move the 40B in that location. And I think that would make a lot of people happy and make the whole process a lot smoother.
In that sense, I think it was touched on the planning board being, but it is sort of a equally large structure in the same general vicinity of the lot.
Can I just ask something out of clarity? Are you also assuming that, because I'm not myself familiar with it, but the peer review process itself, like, once you initiate it, it's gonna, it's gonna take a few weeks to, that we would take advantage of that time while you're redoing the plan? I mean, they would be doing peer review based on the existing plan, right?
Yes. I guess I'm saying simultaneous, that sort of, we would be advancing the 40B as drafted and having that reviewed in due course, but we'd be looking at the alternative in the meantime.
So, is that, and maybe the expectation is, once they go through the peer review, maybe the update for them is, well, here's what we changed, and maybe there is some commonality in there that they can say they've already covered?
Yes, yes, I mean, they're gonna look, for instance, at the things that aren't gonna change.
Like the traffic?
The driveway, traffic, right. It's gonna be a similarly sized building, so like, the flows in and out, traffic-wise, the counts will not change. They'll look at the driveway, they'll look at the sidewalk.
Wetlands out would be probably different, I would expect.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And if the building moves down, then there would be far less effects on the wetland than the hillside.
Right, okay. Okay. Sorry, are you set, Jamie?
That's it for me.
Doug?
So, very similar thoughts, but I don't have any issue with the withdrawal. So, I don't have any issue with, you know, selecting the peer review consultant at least, right, and, you know, picking which one we want to use type of thing. I do think we might want to focus on, I was gonna bring up, the traffic and maybe the design first, you know, because those things are relevant no matter what happens. I do feel like the civil engineering is a bit, you know, we could be spending, you know, and wasting some time, but I would think, at least for us as a group, if we're, you know, for our neighbors and residents being here, I think, you know, we want to probably focus on topics that won't change.
Yeah.
So, just to be efficient. You know, I'm definitely supportive of you guys exploring alternate, you know, locations to move it down, off of it, and try to achieve all of it. And, you know, even if that, I mean, again, you need, you know, approvals from other boards too as well, but the idea that it simply sits on one of the lower parking lots and you're doing shared parking, which, again, during the day, the office is in and most of the residents are out, I think that's an efficient way for us to have less paved area, and if it achieves the donation still, that's great. So, you know, anyways, but I do get concerned after we get through a couple of topics that we're gonna be spinning wheels a little bit. And so, I would encourage you guys to, you know, try to work through your process as quickly as possible on that. So, those are at least my thoughts.
Okay. Doris?
You can hear me? Great. So, I'm moving forward on peer review, I do not have issue with that, so I'd be in favor of moving forward. As the two concurrent plans, the replacement plan could take place, the other plan, and I had, and my thoughts there to add new thoughts to the process, and I'm in agreement with Mike and in agreement with Doug, is that I had listened in on a planning board meeting, and I think we might end up being in the same spot. It seemed, in my opinion, that there was a pretty big delta, and I'm very appreciative to know that there's gonna be some rework of the plan, but there was a very great concern by the planning board, there was just a resistance to the project in general, which can place us in a non-negotiable status, maybe, on the planning board's side. And we have the timeline and the clock, and we might be back to the original plan, and I do think the ZBA, and Jay, to Tullerman, you can, Attorney Tullerman, you can correct me here, that it's gonna, I believe it's gonna be back at the ZBA, whichever path we went. So, it netted light with adding something new in favor of moving forward. I didn't immediately see any consensus of minds or even close to consensus of wanting to have the project at all in the entirety from different speakers at the meeting, or perhaps I missed some sidebar discussion, but I think I was there for the entirety of the meeting. In regard to withdrawing the, the application to remove the condition, I don't have any problem with that, except for I didn't believe our special permit, which has expired, had a condition, it had a finding in it, which Doug had brought up very concisely a few weeks back. So, just seems a little bit odd, we're removing a condition or a meeting, though, I actually thought in the same lines as he did, but maybe I'm overthinking that, so I'm not gonna be a stickler, but it seems why removing a condition that we didn't have on the special permit application. And just one other thought is the, the need for the 40B. There were some ideas, not just that lot, but other lots, that could be, take the replacement of this particular project, and that, that's a long timeline, just, that seems like a good idea, but a very long timeline to get, to get that in motion, when our statute is saying we're behind on our percentage, which is a law, to get a certain amount of units in. So, those are my thoughts, David, and someone else can take the ball.
Well, I mean, specific to the request to withdraw without prejudice the special permit, I mean, that's, regardless of what happened in 2019, they applied for a special permit, we need to take some action on it. So, I think, I think we need to dispose of that anyway.
Thank you. Yes, okay. So, procedurally, we have to respond to the application. Functionally, it doesn't matter. Got it, David, thanks on that.
Yeah. Okay. Do you have something to add, Mr. Carter?
Yeah. I'll be, I'm...
No, just identify yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue.
Thank you.
And particularly, I would address the passing of the permit. These are my notes, if you could pass them to the board.
Could I ask, are they different from what you passed out previously? Okay.
There's still, the issue of subdivision, the form of the subdivision plan hasn't been resolved, so I included a sample of preliminary subdivision.
I can speak to that.
I'm sorry.
I would like to ask you one thing, though. I think what we're talking about tonight primarily is the withdrawal without prejudice of the special permit, and then, sort of, where we go from here. Obviously, what you've listened to, do we continue, do we not? I want to be careful not to go in too deep into the details of the project and start hashing it out, because...
That's not tonight.
I don't think we can do that tonight with all respect. And I, and don't get me wrong, I appreciate, and I think the board appreciates the issues that you highlight here, your obvious knowledge of the subject, so.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, the issue of the preliminary subdivision is, the basis is the problem, we don't have a lot yet, okay? Because we don't have the six-acre lot. So, that needs to be separated out, and it's not a big deal, you know, they just need to submit a preliminary subdivision that creates that six-acre lot, and they just need to create a right-of-way that provides frontage for that lot, okay? There's a sample in what I've submitted there of a preliminary subdivision plan. It defines the lot, the lot area, it shows the boundary lines, and they can look at the preliminary subdivision requirements of the town. So, it's, it's not a big deal, they need to do it, but what is a big deal is they have to separate the six-acre lot, and that hasn't been done yet. And that's, that's not new, and it's really not detailed, so my question is, you know, when is the developer gonna submit that preliminary plan? Because it's required as part of the comprehensive permit, and it's required for these whole proceedings, and it hasn't been submitted yet. So, that's one point. The second thing is, the developer said that he was gonna fly balloons so we could see the four, the four-story building. I think it's very important that the ZBA, that the planning board, that the Conservation Commission see the height of the four-story building, okay? And once that's done, then we'll all be starting from the same page in terms of the impact of this building on the conservation land, and whether a four-story building is actually appropriate. The other thing, you guys have addressed the peer review, that's great. The other thing is that, those are really, oh, and I'm really glad to see that the idea of moving the building down into the footprint of the parking garage, I think that's great, that's a great compromise, and I think the only issue there would just be addressing the details of, is there enough parking? And the parking, if it needs more parking, it could be on the west side of the wetland, up the side of the hill, so that the donation would be a little less than six acres, or it could be relief in terms of parking. So, I'm, I'm very heartened to see that it may be possible to have a compromise here where the donation of the six acres or something close to the six acres would be possible. The other thing I would say is, I was surprised at the first exhibit here, when I looked at the relationship to the size of this triangle in relationship to the whole breakneck hill conservation land, you can see that triangle is very big. So, and you can see, you know, the relates, so like I said, the second one is just a sample subdivision plan, and I'm, I'm really glad to see the possible progress of being able to achieve both things. So, I'd like for the developer to be able to have a successful project, and it also be palatable to the conservation people.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think, I think procedurally wise, I think we want to address the request to withdraw the special permit first. So, I don't think I hear any concerns regarding doing that from any board members. So, I think, having said that, and I think we need a motion to approve the, or, no, no.
To allow.
Motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice of the special permit to remove the condition.
Why is it...
Just the 2019.
Just the 2019.
I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, the request...
The special permit.
That requests that the special permit be modified, to withdraw the six-acre...
The 2019, yeah, yep, yep.
Donation.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Oh, we have a...
I love it.
A motion and a second. All right, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Williams, aye, okay. Taken care of that, that has been approved. I think I'm, I, what, I think clearly the feedback from the board is, all right, let's, let's continue that, I believe, right? Let's go ahead. I think we would, you know, we would all love to have, obviously, a clear plan and something we can go forward with, but I think the timeline you're giving is, is, you know, could give us some opportunity to get some things done, and I think everybody kind of made mention of that, so I think that would be, I think that would be acceptable. The question is, then, I think, when are, when, we would then need to continue, and the question would be, to when?
Yeah.
Right?
Exactly. That's kind of the...
Yeah, that's sort of the crux of it.
End of the month is crazy, that's never gonna work.
Yeah, no, the end of this month would be tough.
But I also don't want to run afoul of any timetables, but we, I don't want to miss anything.
Right, right, understood.
Sitting here now, I'm wondering about maybe, say, the second week of June, so it would be approximately a month? And I defer to the board in terms of when you naturally would be having a meeting as well.
Well, what, well, I mean, part of it is, you know... Well, what, well, I mean, part of it is, you know, and I know you can't really say for certain, but, you know, where do you think you'd really be in four or five weeks from now, you know, in, in terms of achieving what you were talking about?
Yeah, I think in good shape, in terms of having developed a plan that we think could work, and having had a chance to, you know, brief board members one-on-one and begin to get folks' feedback.
Right, okay.
June 12th looks well for me. I don't know how that works.
Yeah, it works good. I'm good with 12th.
Yeah, I think, June, yeah, and we, we have a meeting already scheduled for the 26th.
That I can't make.
Right, so the, the 12th?
Yeah, let's put it on for the 12th.
12th.
I may be remote, but I should be able to make it.
Doris, how's that work for you?
It's, it's actually going to work. Okay. I can't be there in person, I'm overseas.
Yep, wish me.
Okay.
Okay.
While we're together, just one explanatory note about how we view different boards and commissions weighing in on this. Set aside the land donation and the idea of changing the concept plan. We knew with respect to the, the proposed location in front of you and what the peer reviewer will start looking at, that we were going to have to be in front of this board, the conservation commission, and the planning board. And we see that because, of course, we have to be in front of this board because of the nature of the statute. We would have to be in front of the commission because of any proposed work in any wetlands buffer. And then, given that, that this is already a site plan property with the office buildings on it, we've heard from Attorney Tallerman and, and the planning board chair, and we agree about being in front of the planning board to modify that site plan, right? To address whatever the, the stub or remnant is, based on how the lot changes due to the 40B. And so we've always thought we were going to be in front of all three, and we still think we would be in front of all three, even if we are able to come up with a new concept. What we may be asking for would be different, depending on, you know, the final layout, but we still would be in front of all three.
Brian, have you analyzed, sorry? Have you analyzed, and might still be in front of you, obviously, keeping, keeping the planning board proceeding to a site plan approval would, would be preferable for you all? Is there any, if, let's say you added a four or five-story building on the, the lower portion of the property, is that kicking you into any other permitting process before the planning board? Or do you think that would be just, that's still just the ZBA? So let's say, for example, because you'd probably have to subdivide within the lot.
Yes.
Within the lower portion of the property. And we can deal with this later. You know, I know you want to have the least number of stops possible with discretionary permits. So by taking away a portion of that via subdivision in some way, because you don't want to tie up the office buildings into a 40B scheme, it, it tips, I mean, we, we can kind of blue-sky that later, but it's a consideration for you all, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Because right now, you're only proceeding if it was just 40B and taking aside the modification of prior decisions on the 6.2 acres. It's just site plan approval, which is a lot less of a lift.
Yes, that's the hope.
Okay. All right. Okay. You still owe us some wetlands waivers too at some point, right, from the, our first meeting?
Yep. We did submit a revised waivers list in late March.
Okay.
With a larger package.
Okay.
Which I think, were, and, and intended for those to address the concern that had been raised.
Okay. So Jay, just out of clarity, you think, based on what you've heard, trying to continue with peer review of, say, like, a traffic study is probably reasonable?
Certainly traffic. I mean, the, the thing they won't be able to do on traffic too much is internal circulation.
Right.
But they'll certainly be able to do access in off of Route 9 and get you some stuff there into the edge of the property where, where it would be either a sharp left turn or, or going all the way in the back. So those, certainly the volumetric stuff should be fine. Civil is, is the one that's more nebulous right now.
Yeah, right, right, okay.
I can share with the board that we have shared the metrics of this proposed building, whether it be up the hill or, or on the flatland, with MassDOT. And they've confirmed that there would not be a MassDOT permit needed.
Okay.
Is it's existing curb cut?
Yes, it's an existing curb cut, and the added flow does not reach the level under the Massachusetts regulations to require a further permit.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So what's, the, the elderly here on the 12th, you know? Not sure.
I don't know, but it'll either be here.
Here or the safety building, yeah, okay.
Right.
All right, so I think formally, we have to approve the continuing?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Sorry, Doris, go ahead.
Yes, we need to, if we're ready, to take a vote on continuing.
So before that, just a quick comment, because again, I think something that Paul Carter brought up definitely is on my list of items too. So first of all, appreciate, you, you guys did the cross-sections, which were really helpful, and you did respond to a lot of the other comments. And as Jay said, you know, the wetlands, you know, waivers we still need. But, you know, again, I am used to, a subdivision plan would be required, or at least what waivers you need, right? Because if this board is approving it, and I don't think we've actually seen what waivers you have for that subdivision road. So I'm just, you know, putting it out there, I feel like we're still missing some information on that. So, because again, I, I think you do need, like, because again, this does become a, if you create another parcel, it does become a subdivision road, which it is not today. So in order for us to grant that, I think it's helpful for us to know, what are you asking waivers for? Which obviously isn't part of what the comprehensive permit allows for things to be waived. So I don't have that specific list. I think everything else you guys have been very clear and responsive to. So, but my only comment would be, is I think it definitely is good to release, you know, once you guys select Traffic Engineer, we should release him to do that, right? Because that'd be a good topic at the next.
Right.
And we can also focus on other things that might be building-specific. I do have some comments on the building, but, you know, so at least we can cover that. But, but then I think we kind of wait on the civil a little bit to see where you guys are going to come back with a plan. I know you might want us to go forward with that at some point, but I'm just trying to be efficient with, going back to your comment, being efficient, being efficient with time for...
I just don't want to be here to be here.
Yeah, so, but, but at least I think that's a good plan for the next meeting if you guys agree, so.
Yeah.
My thoughts.
Along those lines, one of my takeaways from tonight, sitting here, is that when we next meet with Engineer to talk about the new concept, I'm going to ask him to look at the subdivision rules and regulations.
Yep.
And specifically to identify for us which ones have not been met in terms of the plans that have been submitted.
Yeah, because I think that's a part of the decision we'll be making, is, you know, what waivers we're actually granting as part of it, right? So the better clar, I mean, and again, you may not be ready because the plan might be changing, but that really brings clarity to us that we know specifically, we, we're waiving this. And the implications of that too would be helpful for us, so understood. But, thank you.
Very brief. Their traffic study is more than adequate. As Brian points out, you know, they don't require a change in the access permit. It's really the civil.
Yeah, and, and wetlands, I think, will be, will be important for conservation as well.
I appreciate the board's members regarding the subdivision plan. It is critical, so.
Okay. All right, then.
Make a motion to continue this. So what was, what's that?
June 12th.
June 12th was the...
June 12th, yep, yep.
Make a motion to continue this till June 12th?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, respond with aye again.
We're stuck in it.
Nay?
You're right on time, Doris.
I'm paying attention. I've got the time difference.
There's just a little bit of a delay.
Doug?
Oh, it's funny.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice seeing you.
Do we need a motion? We don't have anything else on the agenda, correct?
No, unless you want to discuss...
And you've continued both, both hearings are covered by that, right?
Yes, I...
What was that? I wasn't paying attention.
Technically, there's two items on our agenda, so I think the motion...
I think it was implicit that everything was getting moved, right? The other one doesn't have the timeline.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, what do you think?
David?
Oh, and... David, the decision of peer review is still with you from the first hearing. So I think between the three of us, we can, we can sort of share, select who you want to do with that. Because at the very first meeting, you, they delegated it to you.
Right.
So we can dig in and...
Okay, yeah, I took, I took a look at it before the meeting. I had some thoughts, but maybe it probably requires a little bit more review.
Yeah, I have not spent much time looking at it.
And I definitely want to, yeah, I certainly want to hear your, your opinion on that, so. Okay. Okay. All right, all right. Thanks, Jay.
Do we need to close the meeting?
Well, we don't want to close the meeting, but we do want to adjourn. But we don't, and we don't, we don't need to discuss 2:50 publicly, do we? Like, just, just wanted to schedule it.
No, I just figured if we're all here, whether you want to do that.
Is not...
Yeah, no, let's do that, but let's, let's, let's adjourn first.
What do we do? Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. So, yeah, I think we, we do have some, there is something to discuss, but I think we can adjourn first, and then we can just talk. It doesn't need to be public, so. Paul's not here, so...
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay, so we can adjourn.